Good morning. Welcome to the meeting this morning. This is the Finance Committee meeting, and we are going to call to order. We're going to begin this morning with public comment. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment. Good morning.
Good morning, y'all. I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur, global visionary, future billionaire, trillionaire. First, it's cool to see the CEO of the airport. Last time I actually flew out of the Gerald R. Ford, I had to fly to the United Nations Socioeconomic Youth Forum to go speak to the United Nations about the work that I do here in Kent County and the global vision that I have of getting youth out of poverty using gaming and esports. Want to do that one day. But I've seen something y'all had on the agenda again, which I spoke on. Ben stopped me before the State Leo Economic Opportunity Regional Community Grant. And so I was thinking of that, and I'm actually bringing the state's regional finals to the DeVos place. So I know it does align. I'm bringing a regional finals, the state's regional finals with the state's largest K-12 esports organization. And I'm bringing that to the DeVos place for three days, and I'll be on TV three times before that. And I know you guys are going to hear about it, the billionaires. I know it's going to go further. It's probably going to go on Yahoo, like all of the esports articles and stuff that I do around Kent County that usually go on further publications and bigger publications. And it has this nice trickle effect on the community. Also, as I footed it here, I was seeing people under the bridge, sleeping under the bridge. And as you guys know, I'm working with Ryan Hillpatrick to bring 3D printed houses here at the early Kent County, early 2026 here in Kent County and across the city of G.R. And so I'm excited for that just because I care about the unhoused people. I care about the people that don't have housing. I care about the people across the nation that don't have international aid. I care about the education system, the healthcare system. I care about green energy. I care about all of the districts across Kent County just because all of the things that happen to those people and the things that affect those people affect me and some possibility. And so I just ask you guys, once you guys get this funding and you guys get funding from the state, I see the state budget and they're cutting services from the state budget. And I hope that you guys speak to the state legislators because you guys are Republicans, and you guys know that this is unethical, and this is affecting everyone. They're cutting state departments' funding. And we don't need those type of cuts. What we need is unity where we have divisions and divide. We need love, and we need to find those things that we find, those common grounds and things that unite us and not the things that divide us. So I ask y'all to use y'all voices just because y'all work for us. Don't forget that. You work for the constituents. We don't work for y'all. Y'all don't work for the DeVoses. Y'all work for us. Y'all work for the citizens that y'all took the oath to serve. And so don't forget that as we're going to be 3D printing houses and bringing big economic boosts here and advancing education through these unprecedented times, through the leadership of ethical black leaders like Dee Jones. I'm just 31 years of age, but I got a lot of life to live in. I'm going to do a lot of beautiful things for Kent County, and I'm going to listen to the presentation for the airport CEO before I go.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to comment this morning? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Stack, supported by Commissioner Halsted. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. That takes us to item number four, our special order of business. Welcome, Tori Richardson from the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come down and share a little bit about what's happening out at the airport. The presentation is full of lots of slides since maybe not all of you have had a chance to get out there and see some of the cool work that's happening. So I just wanted to share some of that. And I'll try to run through it fairly quick and give you some time for some questions, comments, and so forth towards the end. But I always like to start with the fact that the county and the state came together to put legislation in place, really under Act 95 of the Michigan compiled code and laws, so that the airport authority would operate as its own independent authority. And of course, we're very pleased with the board members that you appoint to us, all having different backgrounds. Of course, they all serve three-year staggering terms, but no more than three of those members can be elected officials. So Commissioners Burl and Merchant are two elected officials. And then also by our governing documents, we must have at least one of those individuals representing an area outside of Kent County, and that's Peter Bukema, who's representing basically the shoreline Ottawa and brings in that hospitality retail. So very pleased with a great board that helps drive the strategy and keep staff focused on what we need to do, which has really helped grow West Michigan and make sure that we're able to serve West Michigan well. Quick facts here. Second-largest airport in Michigan, fastest-growing prior to the pandemic, fastest-recovering through the pandemic. And you can see towards the bottom there, 2023, 2024, both record-setting years, on pace this year in 2025 for setting another record-breaking year in terms of passenger activity. So 2% above where we were a year ago. It's about 3,200 acres of land, and I always say this is the place and space for others to do business. So we have over 100 different businesses on our campus, representing about 2,500 jobs. As you look at the slide here, you can see lots of names and logos that I'm sure you're familiar with. Those are just some of those businesses that we would find out at the airport. And of course, the big piece for us is how are we generating economic wealth for our region? So we go through a study about every five years to update this. This most recent one was done last year, so we're up to $7.7 billion of economic wealth for the region. You can see what we're calling the region there, the 13-county area in West Michigan, and supporting over 40,000 jobs. That's key for us. As we look at the airline partners that we have, which really drive a lot of that business, for the first time ever, we have eight different airlines serving the Grand Rapids, Kent County, West Michigan market. So Allegiant, Avelo, American, Delta, Frontier, Sun Country, United, and Southwest. Those are the eight commercial passenger service. Our ninth airline is FedEx, which of course is all cargo. In terms of where our people are coming from, so those that are using the airport, flying in and out of the Gerald R. Ford Airport, the darker shaded areas are those higher-population centers where we see a lot of traffic using the airport. So we call this our catchment area. Great to have the retention that we have, meaning that we are basically serving all of that area for passengers. You can see Big Rapids, Mount Pleasant, Lansing, Kalamazoo, of course, Muskegon, Grand Rapids. We can get, you know, folks as far as Traverse City from the north and as far south as South Bend coming up to utilize our services at the Ford Airport. So where are these people going? Well, on the eight carriers, we have over 1,700 flights for the month of September, going to 27 non-stops. Those non-stops fluctuate depending on the peak of the season. It goes from anywhere, the lowest 26 or 27, up to about 33 or 34 at any given timeframe. But you can see on the route map here which of those airlines are serving those markets. So pretty good representation in route map. Would like to see a little bit more out there to the northwest, and we continue to work on that in terms of our air service development work. I mentioned again, you know, prior to pandemic, fastest-growing. You can see the extent of the trajectory there. The pandemic hit, of course, and then quickly recovering to a couple of years of consecutive growth and on pace for that again, which means we have a lot of development that we have to do, and you'll see that in a moment. Here's the current airlines. So we like to say that if the shares that the airlines have are pretty equally distributed, that's usually a pretty good indication that there's healthy competition amongst the airlines, which means there's also healthy competition for folks that are buying the airfares. And there's no one dominant carrier that can dominate the pricing and cause people to have to pay more. So Delta is the number one in terms of market share. You can see Allegiant, but Allegiant and American are typically number two and three, and they'll swap spots just depending on the time of the year. And then you've got United, Southwest, Frontier, and then both Sun Country and Avelo are just small slivers. They're more or less seasonal markets, and in Avelo's case, just started this year. So this is the first time that they've served our market. I mentioned fare. So we're always looking at how do we stack up with West Michigan compared to the national average, as well as our peer set that you can see in there. The gold bar represents Grand Rapids. We're at $374 for our domestic round-trip fare. This is first-quarter data, so this does lag a little bit. On the far right, you can see the national average is 382, so we're sitting at $8 below the national average in terms of airfare. I like to see that number anywhere between, you know, flat, meaning comparable to the national average, even to slightly above. That usually is indication that the airlines are healthy and profitable in your market, yet again, you still have decent competitive airfares for the guests that are flying. Our board is always driving us. They want us to be innovative, award-winning, and fun. Here's just a slide showing various projects, financial reporting. We've got the marketing awards, earned the highest awards in some of the marketing efforts, the R. Valor Awards. So just making sure that, not that we're winning awards to win awards, but that we are being recognized for the work that we're doing and the staff and what they do and how are they elevating the guest experience. And so it's really a reflection of their work, and it's a great way to celebrate and reward them for the hard work that they do. I shared this last year. So in 2024, had an opportunity to work with the South by Southwest Conference and other partners on our Ford Launchpad for Innovative Technologies. So as we talk about innovation that our board's driving, really looking at ways that we can partner with other companies, both to retain them but also to grow them, looking at different types of products and services that can be offered and deployed in aviation that will help elevate the guest experience, increase efficiency, and then focus on things like safety and security. So to date, we've had over seven different rounds of that, awarding more than $1 million to 34 different projects. And you can see they're coming from states and countries around the world. So pretty cool opportunity. I mentioned that we're developing. So as we grow, so does the airport. And we have lots of construction projects. I'll go through, highlight a few of these right now. First of all, the North Lot Parking Garage, it's highlighted in red up there. That's really the only project that we have that's not making progress to date. Now, it is going into their capital improvement program, so that's going to change quickly. But as we look at those major elevate programs that you see up there, the North Parking Garage is the one that has the least amount of attention right now. But all the other ones, we'll jump into. In concourse A, here's a picture of that right before we opened it, the night before we switched over. So brand-new finishes, bright new space, new food and beverage, retail options. The only piece that we had to finish this year for completing concourse A was the opening of the lounge, which is the Club GRR. And here you can see, back in the middle of June, we opened that for the first time. And of course, guests are loving that opportunity. The Air Traffic Control Tower continues to be our number-one federal priority. We have gone through all of the hurdles with the Federal Aviation Administration to get through all of the siting studies, all of the design, just finishing the environmental, and really just making sure that we have everything ready to go and are finally to that point where the last piece is making sure that we've got federal funding from the FAA to move the tower forward. That's the last remaining piece. This is where the tower, you can see on the top, the current tower is on top of the building. The new tower is in that kind of orangish-red there in the middle, giving a better view back at the airfield. And of course, the new tower is in a higher, better position for visibility for the controllers. But the last remaining item is those federal funding, those federal dollars. We continue to push for the FAA to get that funded. This year, we're doing some enabling work, so it's about a $5 million project to keep that moving and get some of the site work ready for construction. I mentioned the North Garage. This is what we need for the future, and really, I would say, the future starting today. We know that we're over 1,100 spaces short of close-in-covered parking, which we cannot build until we get the tower moved. This is what we need. It's really a six-level structure that is adjacent to and connected to our existing parking garage on top of what we call the North Lot today. Unfortunately, with the tower restrictions in place, we'd only be able to build this two-to-three-level structure and only in the center portion. Really doesn't make sense to do that. We really need the tower moved and to build the entire facility all at once. So that's the slowest of the projects. Here you can see the Consolidated Rental Car Facility. Not sure what the transition's not working, but there was a view of the building looking from the parking garage over. This is, you're looking through the steel walkway system that's going to be elevated, climate control that'll take you from the, what we call the customer service building of the rental car facility into the terminal building. So it's an elevated skyway that will connect. In the future, our federal inspection station will fill in that gap between the terminal and what we call the ConRAC or Consolidated Rental Car Facility. So basically, look like one seamless building. The Terminal Enhancement Project is happening on the other side of the terminal. So on the west side, we have the Terminal Enhancement Project underway, which is the highlighted areas here. You can see that the west ticketing expansion, we have an upper-level administrative office space, we have a main-level area, which is going to be for the ticketing, but then baggage processing for outbound baggage. And down below that, in the basement level, will be all of the Transportation Security Administration screening of all of outbound baggage. This is what it's going to look like, a rendering of the inside of the building. So all of ticketing will happen in one location, all of baggage claim will happen in another. This is just giving you an indication of some of the sortation and explosive detection equipment that will be housed in that basement area. So there'll be close to a year of just conveyors and machines and so forth being installed and put into the building in that lower level. Again, just giving you an idea what this looks like. If you think of, you know, postal packages and things like that, shipping through. Interestingly enough, we're probably one of the largest airports without an in-lane automated system today. So there's smaller airports than what we are that already have the system in place. So really, again, catching up with the times in some cases. And then as we look at Phase Two, so Phase One is getting all of those ticketing functions all into that, kind of the left-hand side of the picture there. Phase Two is going back over where the ticketing is happening for some of the airlines and reconfiguring that all into baggage claim space. So one of the other master plan elements had identified was the shortage of baggage claim devices, both their size and just the sheer number of those. And so we'll be addressing that in Phase Two. We also opened earlier this year our new aircraft rescue firefighting facility. Here you can see the apparatus floor and some of our equipment and personnel out there. We also just opened our cellphone telephone lot, which is basically allowing passengers to get up close to the building, close to it, so that they can wait for their party to arrive and then pull in just kind of right into the parking lot and right back out into the terminal area. So great guest experience. We added over 1,700 surface parking spaces with our economy lot expansion that was just completed as well, just in time for this year's spring break. This should really buy us some time for the next couple of years until we can get to that North Parking Garage where we get those additional spaces that we need. On a community engagement side, so I said, you know, our board wants us to be innovative, award-winning, fun. Launched our first-ever mascot, Jerry the Jet. So Jerry has been very busy out with the community, visiting with students, visiting with different companies and organizations. Here you can see we partnered with the Grand Rapids Public Museum for their shark exhibit. We're going to see Jerry out and about in many different places and really helping to educate and just literally have some fun. Very pleased to partner with Allegiant Airlines for the Mid-Michigan Honor Flight. So this is a great opportunity for our heroes to be able to go into the nation's capital to see some of the monuments and memorials, celebrating and recognizing their service. Each year we do this, about 150 veterans join. There were two different flights this year, which was great. And you can see off in the lower right there, a little water cannon salute, again, just commemorating that trip for those individuals. We also have our Passenger Appreciation Day that was held on April 4th, another way to just say thank you to the folks that use us. And we also are getting ready for this upcoming season where we'll have the lighting. We'll also have our holiday music, which is right in the terminal building there, different choirs coming out and singing and really entertaining for the passengers. We just completed our Runway 5K, which is a charitable contribution that we do when we select a different charitable partner each year. This year, it was Pause for Cause. Always about 1,000 different people that come out to the airport to run on the taxiways and runways, which is a great opportunity if you're never to get, you know, able to get out on the runway. This is a great way to do it. And then food trucks, just wrapped up last week with our final food truck rally for the season. So always a great hit. Lots of folks come out there just taking in some of the sights, the construction, the planes taking off and landing, and really some really good food at the food trucks. Next year, we will be expanding the food truck option. And so the area in red is an expansion to what we have in our viewing park today. And that's really meant to be a central location for all of the food trucks to be located in the center circle there. We'll have power set up so that we're not going to have noisy generators, lots of cords and things like that that people need to, you know, navigate through. And it really keeps it from a pedestrian-safe environment, but also just an overall enhancement to the ambiance of being out there and being able to, you know, take in some fresh air and see the planes and what's happening. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Tori. Is there any commissioner questions or comments this morning? Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Tori.
Good morning.
Thank you for the update. Of course, those of us that have gone through the airport are still wowed by Terminal A. It's a phenomenal new facility, and I am, I still have people calling me, thanking me, I had nothing to do with it, for that airport, just because it's such a great experience for people to go through. And for people that fly through a lot of airports, it's still their number one, I think. It's a great facility. I do have a couple of questions. So I think I have some sense about how significant long-term parking is to the overall financial integrity and stability of the airport. So given that, I know how important it is to get this new facility constructed, but is the interest and the effort to identify sort of shuttle services, whether it's from downtown to the airport or key suburban areas to the airport, is that still financially work? I mean, I guess I'm thinking that you don't really want that because you want driving out there and parking at the same time. It is a convenience issue. It is a service issue to have these sorts of things. What's the dynamic between the two? Are you still pushing both?
We do, and we work with, we work with both. We are a very independent area in the Midwest where we rely on our vehicles, and we want to go when we want to go, and we take them and park them. And so we see that sort of as our culture, what we see people wanting to do. Because we look at how many people use the parking facility versus are doing drop-offs. And you'd be surprised, majority, depending on when we take the survey, either the majority or just about a 50-50 split are using the parking facilities versus having somebody drop them off. That could be friends, family, but that can be Uber, Lyft, other, we call TNCs, transportation network, companies. So the utilization is a little bit different. So we're always watching that. Of course, we have agreements in place also with some of those shuttle companies that do that, finding the right timing, and it's the same with even with the bus service, right? So finding the right timing for when you want to get there and when you want to go and get your luggage. Unfortunately, sometimes it tends to be more of a hassle than a convenience, and so we see less riders in those types of, you know, modes of transportation. But clearly, look at it, and you're right, behind the airlines, who are basically paying for the airfield, it is our number-one revenue source. So as we continue to pay for, you know, the expansion and building that six-story structure, that is going to, you know, pay for that structure. And so we utilize those funds that way, and it is the number-one revenue source behind the airlines.
So is there a break-even for us passengers? Is there a break-even where Uber makes sense versus parking? I mean, to me personally, if it's more than a week, certainly more than 10 days, I'll Uber it. If it's less, you know, then I'm willing to pay for the convenience.
We typically see that. It's a great question. Typically see that in like the three-to-four day, but it really also depends on what's happening. So if there's a large event happening downtown here and you're starting to see peak pricing, you could see Ubers and Lifts charging you $50 to get downtown, which doesn't take very long. You're then basically, you know, in a day-or-two environment. Other times, it can be, you know, like I said, three-to-four days, and you're really looking at that price point to say, we can get you out at the parking facility in one of those other, you know, either the surface lot or the garage and be very comparable. In fact, that's what we're doing right now with our marketing is putting out there to the guests, you know, have you done the analysis? Which is better for you? Should you have Ubered, or should you have parked your vehicle in the parking garage? Just to get people thinking that way.
Yeah. So my last comment is, I think I left you a message earlier this year. When I had a family member call me and say, you know, we have problems with the flights and the airlines are blaming the airport, saying the airport doesn't have sufficient staff, they don't have the staffing, whatever it is. And I said, that just doesn't make sense to me. What kind of control do we have over the airlines when it comes to those sorts of dynamics? Because it strikes me that the airlines are probably, what is the point of frustration for the passenger?
It is. And there's, as you mentioned, there's very little differentiation between if it just happened at the airport, they consider it the airport. It doesn't matter if it was a screening incident, you know, rental car incident, or in your case, you know, an airline incident. Unfortunately, we have very little control over. We are unable to dictate any sort of customer service levels for an airline. The challenge for the airlines, unfortunately, in a market like Grand Rapids, is we are diversion airport, which means we can also get a lot of airplanes showing up that are unscheduled, meaning they were supposed to go to Detroit, they were supposed to go to Chicago area or Midway, and they end up here due to weather, due to ground stop issues at some of those airports. And then those staff that are there to basically work that one or two flights now have two, four, six, seven flights that are trying to work, and there's just not enough staff to go around. So unfortunately, that does happen where, when a pilot gets on the radio and says at the airport, we don't have staff, they're really not talking about airport authority staff. They're talking about their company at that airport. So in that case, it might be United, or it might be American, just simply doesn't have the staff to handle all those airplanes all at once. And so they're quickly overwhelmed.
Can you encourage them to just bite the bullet and take the fall instead of blaming us?
We do, and we work with the local station managers on that because they understand that. Unfortunately, the flight crew, lots of times, they don't understand how people take that or interpret that. Same happened last winter when they said that the airport, you know, ran out of de-ice fluid. Well, they didn't. One airline ran out of their own de-ice fluid, but the airport didn't. And the airport doesn't do any deicing. It's one of the other companies that does it for them. But the words mean something, and sometimes it doesn't come across, and the passenger doesn't get the true full picture of what's going on. But we do encourage that, and in fact, we work very closely with the local stations at the airport, just trying to come up with what are those mitigation plans? We call them IROPs, Irregular Operations. How are we going to handle those types of events? And are there opportunities for us to partner and help each other out more?
Good. Thank you. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. And believe it or not, you actually do help us a lot. So this body has helped us with the bonds over the years to help us do that development. Again, I'm not sugarcoating it. You give us great board members who are pushing us to enhance that guest experience and to continue to grow and develop the facility into something that this community can be proud of. So you are, in effect, helping us out and putting good board members in place and helping us with some of the financing, just at least as a backstop to make sure that we can pay for those bonds and get those capital projects complete. Thank you.
Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tori, for the presentation. It was good information. Glad that the airport is expanding and really making sure the passengers are having the experience that they should. Just a couple of questions. So you mentioned the Air Traffic Control Tower and that all the requirements pretty much have been met at this point, and you're just, you guys are waiting on the funding situation. So I just wanted to kind of get a better understanding of where that's at. Has, you know, lobbyists been asking questions and trying to figure out what the timeline might be on that so that we can get that moved? I know that's been a long process. And then the second question is, I didn't see anything in the presentation mentioning the sustainability plan. Could you give us an update on where that's at as well?
Sure. So the first question on the FAA Air Traffic Control Tower. So we continually look at the tower as being an FAA or Federal Aviation Administration facility. It'd be owned by them, operated by them, maintained by them. That means it has to come out of their funds. They have been struggling for decades to have enough funds to build and replace all this aging infrastructure. So we fall in line with all of the other airports that are waiting for facilities to be rebuilt, replaced, upgraded, or whatever from the federal facility standpoint. We compete with those other airports every year, try to get funding for this. We've been successful getting little chunks of money here and there to help us with design, to help us with some of these enabling projects. But the reality is, the FAA does not have enough federal funding available to replace one tower in a year, and they have about 60 that need to be replaced. So there is this huge backlog of facilities that need to be replaced or upgraded with the shortfall in funding that is available to them to do that. We were hoping in this last passage of the beautiful bill that we would have funding in there or a prescribed direction to FAA to utilize some of those funds to replace towers. That language came out at the very last minute, basically giving the FAA the ability to use those funds, however they choose to use those funds. We know that there's been other airports that had tower projects ready to start, and the FAA literally just last week pulled the plug on those and aren't doing them because the cost came in too high. So we fall in line with the rest of the airports that are competing for that, and unfortunately, it is frustrating. We've got files at the airport dating back to the late '90s on this very project. So, it's been a long time coming, and we'll continue to push for it. We need some funds at the federal level and those to be allocated to replacing towers. The second piece on the sustainability. So, we have, over the years, been doing, I would say, sustainability efforts, but not necessarily aligned and not necessarily well documented, well defined, right? It's been how, can we do some savings here? Can we do some reduction there? Two years ago, we went out for process to select Meet and Hunt and Progressive A&E to help us with the sustainability master plan, to try to get more focused and a little bit more deliberate to say, these are the areas that we should focus on based on what we can control and based on what we know. And so, some of it was literally going back to 2021 and just trying to define, where did we start from? So, if we're going to start measuring a reduction, a reduction compared to what and in what areas? So, we're looking at waste reduction. We're looking at energy consumption, renewable energy. Just at our last board meeting last week, Consumers was out and provided us a check with $379,000 on a partnership that we do with them on just making sure that we are working with them and making sure that the community, when it needs additional power, that we can take some of our systems offline, generate some of our power to help them and give them some of that credit back. And so, we work with companies like that. But the sustainability master plan is really, how do we put all those pieces together cohesively and then make some progress and really track, how are we doing compared to 2021? And are we meeting some of those goals? So, like diverting solid waste 30% by 2026, reducing our carbon footprint 20% by 2035, and just received a carbon accreditation award for that. So, doing the things that we've been doing, but trying to make them a little bit more cohesive and aligned, and then a little bit better on the metrics and the measuring of it. And that was just shared with our board two meetings ago. So, really, just in the early stages, probably have a lot to learn from you all and each other as we navigate that process going forward.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that it is actively in process and that you all have been thinking about that and working that into all of the wonderful updates and things that you're making. Just a quick follow-up. So, on the air traffic control tower, so do you have any idea where you guys fit in the 60 that need to be replaced?
We are the largest in the top 75, but that does not necessarily mean that that's the priority for the FAA. So, they keep changing that, and we work with the FAA, we work with legislators. They do not share that list with anyone. So, we've had Senator Peters, Representative Sculton, asking those questions, and they get the runaround, unfortunately, in terms of where we stand on it. But they have all been given, yes, we're going to work with you to get that tower replaced. So, they've been given the right wording from the FAA that we're going to work together to get that solved. But again, I understand their frustration. They don't have enough funds to do one tower a year, and they've got about 60 of them. So, they're trying to figure it out, too. And I would say, if you're putting me on the spot, I'd say we're still probably two to three years away from that, and it's a two-year construction cycle for that tower to be built. Yep.
Any other? Yep. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. Some good information in the follow-up from questions from Commissioners Steck and McLeod, but I just wanted to commend you guys on all the work that you're doing. It is a really good experience as a customer, as a traveler, as a passenger, and I just encourage everyone I talk to that, you know, we're looking at O'Hare, Midway, or Kalamazoo. That rate chart is helpful, too. Other than Midway's got us a little bit there, but it's only southwest, so what are you going to do? But anyway, we appreciate the work that you do, and it's nice to learn about the other things that are going on. I know when we, a few of us were in Washington earlier this year, we put in our own two cents to our congressional delegation about ATC, appreciate some of the information that you guys were able to get over to us there. And it sounds like our folks are on board with that, which is nice to hear from our delegation. So, that's a rare bipartisan issue I think the Michigan delegation can agree on, so we appreciate that. But yeah, thanks for the good work. You guys are a source of pride for us as a community, so keep it up. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Commissioner Steck for a second.
For a second. So, does the FAA allow like a co-funding structure? I mean, it strikes me, I know we don't have a lot of money, don't get me wrong on that, but to the extent that a airport like Ford were to say, you come in and we'll do this amount, and then you commit the dollars, FAA, is that even a conversation they're willing to have?
It is. Their conversation would twist to say, why don't you take the entire tower and you own it and manage it, and we'll operate it, and we would bear all of those costs.
Well, I didn't mean to go that far.
We don't either. That's where they like to take that conversation. Because again, they recognize if they can shed these and not have to pay for them or do them, then it's much better for them, not better for us. So, we have had some of those conversations, and then it really gets into the use and the type of funds that are used. So, we, for instance, get some of the money that local travelers put into the airway trust fund. So, as you fly, you have a tax on your ticket that goes to the national transportation system. We get a portion of those funds back. We're a donor airport, meaning the people that fly in and out of here are putting more money into the system than what the airport is able to get back because those funds help pay for smaller airports that don't pay for themselves. Those funds can't be used and commingled with FAA funds. It's considered diversion of revenue. So, we have to be very careful about what types of funds could be used for that. It's not that any funding would be allowed to be utilized to commingle with the FAA. But that's essentially what we're doing this summer with the Enabling Project, is taking some of those design funds, some of our general funds, like off of the parking revenue, and putting those together with some state funds that we're able to receive to get us about $5 million of that site development done. So, that's a mini version of doing some of that co-op partnership or commingling of funds, but it's got to be very specific and only for certain purposes.
But will they lease the space? I mean, so if we build it and we lease it to them on a 20-year lease, at least it covers all of our costs and gets us our parking done?
We think so. We think so. We could look at something like that in a lease-back environment. Our challenge is, that tower is about a $70 million project. If they do it, because they're going to put their equipment in it, if we take it over and have to do it, it's closer to $110 million with the facilities, the equipment that they need to put in there. Because we'd be procuring those and purchasing and owning them outright as opposed to the FAA taking their equipment and putting it in there and continuing to own it. So, the price goes up, and unfortunately, we also have the parking garage, a hotel, and other development that does not have federal funds associated with them that are ineligible for those types of funding that we would say is a higher priority than to take, say, $110 million of our funds to put towards the tower. Because then, we get the tower moved, but we don't have funds for the rest of the work that we have to do.
But this has been a sort of a stumbling block for us for years, and it just has to be some way to get over that hurdle.
And that's where we're at today. So, we just finished the environmental. So, we've had a series of hurdles to get through over the last, I'll say, five years that we've been able to clear. Really, this is the first time that we are in the clear, ready to go, just need federal funding to do it. So, while it's been frustrating, there's been things that we've had to continue to work with the FAA to do, those essentially are complete, and now it's just federal funding. But to your point, we call it Plan B or Option B. It's not the best option, but it is an option.
It's not the first time we've had to look for Plan B when the federal government's involved.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what percentage of the rentals can we allocate?
Okay. Any other Commissioner questions or comments this morning? I don't see any. Thank you so much for your presentation and for joining us this morning.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. That will take us on to item number five, our agenda items. We'll start with item A from the Clerk Registars Office, the 2025 Register of Deeds Automation Fund Additional Appropriation.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appropriate an additional $50,000 to the FY 2025 Register of Deeds Automation Fund budget from additional Register of Deeds Automation Fund revenue. Summary, the Register of Deeds Automation Fund is used to account for funds set up aside under provisions of P.A. 698 of 2002 for upgrading technology in the Register of Deeds office. The FY 25 amended budget is $253,626 and an additional $50,000 appropriation from estimated additional Register of Deeds Automation Fund revenue is being requested. The additional funding is needed to cover unbudgeted replacement of scanning equipment and payments to records vendor related to the ongoing software updates.
Is there a motion for this item?
So, moved.
Moved by Commissioner Steck, supported by Commissioner Halsted. Questions or comments from Commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We're on to item B from Community Action, the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan Appropriation for Senior Center Staffing.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept and appropriate $29,250 in grant funds from the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan to the FY 2026 Kent County Community Action Fund. Budget for senior center staffing contingent upon execution of a contract and to authorize the board chair or designee to execute the grant agreement, approve extensions, amendments, and increases to the grant appropriation not to exceed 15% of the original award. Summary, AAA of West Michigan has made $29,250 in senior millage funds available for the KCAA to administer senior center staffing in FY 26. This addition to the Congregate Meals Program provides one part-time staff member to support the participants with enriching programming, additional socialization, and a safe environment. An existing vacant position within the department will be converted to create this role. KCCA is requesting acceptance and appropriation of these funds to begin the recruitment process, initiate the program, and spend the awarded funds in a timely manner. The period of performance is October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner McLeod. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Green. Questions or comments? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Am I right? This is all senior millage funding?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. On to item C from Parks and Recreation, accept funding from the Kent County Parks Foundation for Millennium Park entry sign and landscaping.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept and appropriate up to $150,000 from the Kent County Parks Foundation to the Millennium Park Gateway Sign Project in the FY 2025 Capital Improvement Fund budget. Summary, in 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved the purchase of a residential home and property for the expansion of Millennium Park per Resolution 10222112. Parks Department in partnership with the Kent County Parks Foundation and with assistance from a grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund purchased the property in 2022 located at the corner of Butterworth Avenue and Maynard Avenue, which effectively sits at the main drive entrance into Millennium Park. The structures on the property were demolished in 2024 to make way for a new proposed gateway sign into Millennium Park. The Kent County Parks Foundation and Parks Department staff have cooperatively developed a proposed entryway sign and landscaping plan for the property, which is included for your review. The FY 25 Capital Improvement Plan included a $50,000 county appropriation for the project. The Kent County Parks Foundation has committed up to $150,000 for the project. The final amount of the Parks Foundation commitment will depend upon final project costs, but the project budget is set not to exceed $200,000. The project is anticipated to be bid in fall of '25 with construction completed in spring of '26.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod. Is there support? Support by Commissioner Steck. Questions or comments on this item? Vice Chair McLeod.
Just a quick question. So, I just wanted to understand if the demolition of the structures on the property is part of this cost or if that's separate?
Thank you. So, that is a separate cost that was budgeted in a previous year, so this funding is completely just for the sign and landscaping project.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning.
So, when I looked at the drawing, are we realigning the entrance from that intersection or is it simply going to be the existing Maynard?
It's just the existing roadway, so this doesn't include any roadwork. It is offset enough that there could potentially be intersection work done in the future without having to move the sign, but this will simply be placed on our property at the intersection as it is right now.
And we're keeping the pond?
We're keeping the pond.
Okay. So, is this the only signed entrance? Because there's not a signed entrance up of Butterworth further down.
Correct. Yep. So, there is, as you get to Millennium Park, we have the signs on the Recor side and the Meadow side, but this will be like the first actual Millennium Park sign going into the property.
So, is it our intent that traffic coming off of the Expressway and Wilson will come down Butterworth and then travel all the way down Butterworth to this point of entrance?
So, that's typically the route that people take. Every now and then, you'll get somebody that'll go down Veterans and then come in the back way, but I think anecdotally, if you looked at it, probably 90% or so of the traffic that's coming from the south will head to this intersection before going into the park.
Okay. Good. Well, it's time we had a sign there, so good.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We're on to item D, also from Parks and Recreation, purchase of land for addition to Millennium Park.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase of a residential parcel within the footprint of Millennium Park for the expansion of Millennium Park, to accept and appropriate up to $200,000 from the Kent County Parks Foundation to the Millennium Park Land Acquisition Project in the FY 2025 CIP Fund budget and to authorize the county administrator or his designee to sign all necessary documents to execute the purchase. Summary, in accordance with the Kent County Parks Trails and Natural Areas Master Plan, the department continues to pursue the remaining properties within the envisioned Millennium Park footprint. Recently, the department has engaged in negotiations with the property owner of 1184 Maynard on a potential acquisition by the county. The parcel is an approximately .85 acre home site and provides a key connection between existing park properties on the Maynard corridor. The negotiated price is $550,000, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in the proposed real estate purchase agreement. The proposed agreement has been drafted and approved by Kent County Corporate Council. The county currently has $400,000 allocated through the Kent County ARPA allocation to the Parks Department for the acquisition of property within Millennium Park. The remaining funding for the purchase, up to $200,000, will come from a commitment from the Kent County Parks Foundation.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Steck. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Halsted. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So, Ben, is this the last residence along Maynard, and the only thing left is commercial property?
Correct. Yep. So, there are three properties kind of in that corridor coming into the park. This is a residential property. The other two are commercial properties.
And the commercial properties are still functioning commercials, so we are waiting the transition of that?
Yeah. We have had multiple conversations with both of those property owners even since I've been with the county, which has been two and a half years now. Those conversations obviously extend back previously. So, yeah, we continue to keep an eye on that. They're very important parcels for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. On to item E from the Administrator's Office, West Michigan Welcome Plan donations.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept and appropriate $32,225 in donations to the Kent County Welcome Plan budget in the FY 2025 Special Projects Fund. Summary, the Welcome Plan was created with 36 partners to identify initiatives that welcome and support refugees and immigrants in community engagement, economic well-being, safety, education, and access to services. The continually expanding Welcome Plan Collaborative currently includes 50 organizations. The Administrator's Office is expecting to receive $17,225 in donations from community organizations to help support the Global Gathering Event on September 13, 2025, and $5,000 to support a maximizing economic potential summit on August 8, 2025. Additionally, Corwell Health is committed to provide $10,000 to support Welcome Plan activities. The annual Global Gathering Event will showcase cultural experiences, and as part of National Welcoming Week activities, Welcoming Week celebrates communities coming together to promote cross-cultural understanding and raise awareness of the benefits of welcoming everyone. The economic summit is focused on connecting community members, employers, and workforce development agencies with an emphasis on using international degrees in the U.S., credential translation and evaluation, and strengthening opportunities in West Michigan. Organizations contributing funds include Corwell Health, Lake Michigan Credit Union, Grand Rapids Kent County Convention Arena Authority, Bethany Christian Services Network 180, Grand Rapids Community Foundation, Experience GR, River City Grant Writing, National Heritage Heritage Academy, City of Grand Rapids, Office of Oversight and Public Accountability.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Steck. Any questions or comments on this item? Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm really happy to see that these donations are coming in to support the people that live in our communities and that all of the partners that are listed here are still in support of a welcoming community.
Any other questions or comments this morning? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We are on to item F from the Administrator's Office, State of Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Regional-Community Collaborative Grant.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunities Regional-Community Collaborative Grant, called the RCC Grant. Accept and appropriate $255,000 to the FY 2026 RCC Budget in the Special Projects Fund and authorize the board chair or designate to execute the grant agreement, approve extensions, amendments, and increases to the grant appropriation, not to exceed 15% of the original award. Summary, the Administrator's Office received notice of an FY 2026 State of Michigan Regional- Community Collaborative RCC Grant Award totaling $255,000. Of the total $180,000 funds, implementation and expansion of Welcome Plan goals, serving refugees and immigrants in Kent and Ottawa Counties, and $75,000 supports implementation and expansion of the RCC Economic Development Plan. The FY 26 Grant will fund the full-time Welcome Plan Coordinator, one part-time temporary staff to implement the Economic Development Plan, and contractual services to support plan implementation, including translation and interpreter services for grant writing workshops, resources to support community engagement, economic development, event planning and coordination, and meeting and training coordination for Welcome Plan Collaborative. The grant term is October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026. This is the fourth consecutive year that Kent County received the RCC Grant. Pending receipt of the grant agreement from Michigan LEO in September of '25, Assistant Corporate Council will review and approve the agreement as to form prior to signature.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Steck. Questions or comments? Vice Chair McLeod.
Just a quick question, I guess, in terms of what is Plan B on this if things don't go quite right with state funding?
I think we'll likely, if we face that decision, it'll be a year, because the state has residual funding in the amount necessary for the grant, and they've given us assurances that this is good for the next fiscal year. But certainly, we could be in that very position next year.
Chair Green.
Thank you. What is the Economic Development Plan? It's a reference to Fairmount here, so I just wanted to get some clarification. Morning.
Good morning, everyone. Holland Dela Cruz, Welcome Plan Coordinator. So, the economic development portion of the RCC Grant is new this year, and we were actually served as a pilot program in 2025. And so, this is referring to the engagement with employers, increased engagement with workforce development agencies for a more robust access to, for internationally trained professionals to be able to re-enter their career, was our last summit. We will be able to host a third-time event in the upcoming year, so those funds will support the running of an event. It will support a part-time staff to ensure that we're able to bring in more partners currently. The West Michigan Hispanic Chamber, the Grand Rapids Chamber are at the table, but our hope is to increase just awareness for local business partners about different assets within our community, especially in our immigrant and refugee community. This is a newer funding source for all regions, so we are one of five regions that receive funding from the state LEO grant, and we've actually been recognized as a leader in this, which is why we were able to do that additional funding this year for the event, and we'll continue that forward. And they've been very well attended.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. On to item G from the Administrator's Office, Tax Sharing Agreement with Byron Township/84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the tax-sharing agreement between Kent County Byron Township and the 84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority and to authorize the board chair to execute the agreement. Summary, the 84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority was formally established by vote of the Byron Township Board on May 19, 2014, to improve retail and commercial areas located within the development district, now primarily containing the Tangler Outlet Mall. In accordance with its economic development participation policy, Kent County Commission voted to opt all countywide millages out of the plan for tax increment financing on April 10 of 2014. On July 15 of 2014, also in accordance with the economic development participation policy, Kent County entered into a tax-sharing agreement to provide the incremental taxes derived from the county's millage to support the development plan of the 84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority for a period of 10 years. The tax-sharing agreement expired on July 15 of 2024. Byron Township and the 84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority submitted a proposal for the extension of the tax-sharing agreement. Under this proposal, the tax agreement would expire on May 19, 2034, which aligns with the expiration date of the 84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority's development plan. Under the tax-sharing agreement, the 84th Street Corridor Improvement Authority could continue to capture the incremental growth of the county's millage, calculated using the taxable value from 2014 as a base, but only to the extent it is matching the contribution from Byron Township's millage. The contract includes a one-time payment at time of execution of $24,587, which accounts for the lost year of capture due to the agreement expiring in July of last year. To the extent that the tax-sharing agreement varies from the economic development participation policy, the policy is suspended for the sole purpose of approving this tax-sharing agreement in light of the unique circumstances requiring variance from the policy. Corporate Council has reviewed and approved the agreement as to form.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Steck. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Green. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So, if I understand how this policy works, the dedicated millages are exempt from this increment?
Yes.
So, it's only the core property millage of the county that is subject to the enhanced capture?
Right.
And that will go for another 18 years?
Nine years from now, yeah.
Okay. Can you give us some sense, what's the magnitude of funds involved?
So, I'll have Josh, who's been working directly with Byron, on this.
So, that $24,500 figure would be what the previous year was, so incrementally, from my understanding, there's not any more significant investment proposed for this district, so it won't be, you know, it'll incrementally grow as the taxable value of the property grows, but it won't be significant. So, over that nine years, I wouldn't expect it to grow more than $10,000.
So, it's increment over the current?
Well, it's increment over the base, so that increment, this past year would have been $24,500, so next year it'll be $24,600, and it'll kind of keep kind of going up from there, yeah.
So, I guess I'm trying to get clear.
It's over the base you established in 2014.
2014.
So, it's grown up to the $24,500.
It's not stepping it up to 2025 increment going forward?
Right. Right. So, it continues at the 2014 base until 2034. Right now, it's at $25,000 after the first 11 years, or 10 years.
And how does that balance work vis-à-vis the, because it matches Byrins?
Yep. So, if that increment is more than what the township's contribution based on their increment would be, we go with the lower number. So, we do match the township one-to-one. If our increment is above and beyond that, they would only capture the amount that the township matches. If the increment is below that, then it would only be whatever the increment is. So, it could be less than a match if that's the case.
So, we both have the same amount of skin in the game.
Yeah, that's been the case for, yeah.
And we do see other interest in doing this from other local units. Up until around 2009 or so, the county pretty much allowed most uses of TIF to go, and then the Great Recession happened, and the county looked at what was being captured and said, whoa, and really put a restrictive policy in place that's in the economic development policy. We are reviewing that. We've had, one of our MAs, Jen, has kind of done a comprehensive look at all TIF in the county. We plan to bring that forward for a discussion, certainly next year, but we think there may be, the policy needs to be looked at these many years later to see if that's where the board wants to be.
And we do have Bill Van Dyke, the Byron Township Treasurer, and Tim Baker, their assessor, is here if there's any questions specific to the development plan or anything.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We're on to our final action item of the day from the Administrator's Office, the Winter 2025 Dedicated Millage Property Tax Levy.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to authorize a Winter 2025 County Corrections and Detention Millage Levy, Senior Services Millage Levy, Veteran Services Millage Levy, Zoo Museum Millage Levy, and Ready By Five Millage Levy. Summary, the Kent County Board of Commissioners adopted the FY 2026 budget on August 28, 2025. Included in the adopted budget is the programming and appropriations necessary to support operation and debt service requirements for the county corrections, detentions, facilities, senior services programming, veteran services programming, zoo museum operations, and Ready By Five programming. On August 2, 2022, county electors authorized dedicated property tax millages in support of senior services and veteran services. In August 2008, November 2016, and August 2024, county electors authorized dedicated property tax millages in support of county corrections, detention facilities, zoo museum operations, and Ready By Five programming respectively. The resolution will authorize a levy of 1.9432 mills, which includes 0.7417 mills for operating debt service requirements for county corrections and detention, 0.4914 mills for senior services, 0.0491 mills for veteran services, 0.4134 mills for zoo and museum operations, and 0.2476 for Ready By Five programming. Funds derived from the levy of these millages will be utilized to support these services in the fiscal year 2026 county budget.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Halsted. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We are on to miscellaneous. Is there any commissioner miscellaneous this morning? It's a lively group. Okay, moving on. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending the finance meeting this morning.